Meeting is called to order. Mr. Steve Downs will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to make this reply of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Downs here, and we'll need a roll call to determine if we have a form.
Alder Person, Hopin, John?
Here.
Tepley?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Melby?
Here.
Downs?
Here.
Karens?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Was this meeting properly noted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, let's see. I'm gonna get the agenda approved first here. It's four on the last slide. I have the council take a minute to review the agenda and then we'll move to approve.
Mayor, you can remove eleven and twelve. We don't have any information on those.
Okay. Okay, we'll remove eleven and twelve. Are there any other?
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the paper, John. This is eleven and twelve, but it's twelve and thirteen on the updated agenda online.
Okay, so twelve and thirteen. Let us know if there are any other necessary changes, if not, then we'll move to approve.
I make motion to approve with number twelve and thirteen deleted from the agenda.
Motion from Ms. Tepley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Melby. Any discussion of the agenda? Hearing none all in favor of approving the amended agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, next on the agenda. It's closed session. Chair may entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section nineteen dot eighty-five one G, to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The purpose is to discuss ongoing litigation and confer with legal counsel. Is there a motion to enter closed session?
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Ms. Walters. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Downs. All in favor of entering closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. Okay, next on the agenda, informational presentation from Richland County Ambulance Service. Do we have the microphone?
This is why you left Finance and Personnel.
Yes, yes, I did. I needed to get some food and then I hit.
Thanks for joining us.
You want me to hit that for you, or I can slide that over and you can hit it as you want. Okay.
And this must be the one that I forgot to update the data. So the date is clearly not December anymore. Welcome to 2024. So I am Amber Birch. I am with Richland County Ambulance. I'm currently the interim service director. So for those of you who aren't aware, Darren Gudgeon, he's been a service director for nineteen years. He took a position with Wisconsin Emergency Management. So we're currently in the process of trying to figure out what the future of the service director looks like. So there will be more information to come on that once decisions are made. And then joining me tonight, Brian Nagros here, he may or may not speak for a little bit too. So he is the Joint Ambulance Committee Committee Chair. And then Sharon, you guys all know, she is one of the representatives for the city at the Richland, or the Joint Ambulance Committee. So in the future, if you guys have concerns or that kind of thing, she is the one to let know so that she can voice that at those meetings.
Or Tom.
Or Tom. Yep, Tom. There you are. And then you guys are also welcome to attend at any time. So if you guys are interested in sitting in or you have questions just like these, we have the public comment section and you guys are more than welcome to attend to get more information and, you know, voice your thoughts. So a little bit of background on the service and committee. So the service was established in 1972. It's been around for a while now. We celebrated our 50th anniversary last year. But the Joint Ambulance Committee was established in 2015. So for those of you who were in the community and had heard the conversations that were taking place, 2013, 2014 were pretty difficult years for the service. We were having a hard time responding to calls because, as is a common issue in EMS, starting to become a common issue with fire departments as well, getting new members is very difficult, especially when you're looking at trying to ask people to volunteer for a role that is so beyond what a normal volunteer would do. So people who are interested in volunteering will volunteer with Kiwanis and the Rotary Club and things like that, and they're able to give back to their community in such a way that you can feel that sense of purpose. But when you volunteer with the ambulance, you're volunteering to put yourself, to respond to somebody's worst day. And not everybody's cut out for that, right? We all know that. But sometimes their worst day can become your worst day too. And so that's a heavy burden for people to bear, especially as a paid-on-call volunteer. So in 2015, you can stay on that side a little bit longer.
Stay on.
You're fine, sorry. So in 2014, the City Council and Joint, or the City Council and County Board got together. There was an ad hoc committee that was established with members of both boards, council, and then service members. And they determined what the future of the service needed to look like. And they were able to come up with the Joint Ambulance Committee. So that's what started in 2015. So per county resolution and then MOUs with each of the municipalities we serve, we provide ambulance service to the different municipalities, which I believe are going to be listed in a little bit. So the County Board officially has the ultimate decision-making authority, but each of the municipalities we serve actually have a voice at the table now. One of the other things that came through the Joint Ambulance Committee is having segregated budget and account, so it doesn't just go into the county's general operating fund. And we'll discuss that in a little bit. And then we also have a subcommittee. So with the, looking at the future of the service director position, the subcommittee met to come up with an idea of what they feel is the right choice. And then going through the process, it will go to the Joint Ambulance Committee for them to approve, and then to the County Board if necessary. From the ambulance service side of things, we have volunteers paid on call that are still in existence, but again, fewer than we had in the past. So as of 2015, we started adding full-time and we also now have some part-time essentially positions. So currently we have 20 members. So this is our squad photo from this last year. We do have a few new members that have started since February of 2020, so despite the fact that COVID hit, it didn't scare everybody away. So we've added a few members and you can see in the, as far as the picture above, I've got them color-coded for you. So if you know a member of the service, you can look at the color and determine if they're paid on call versus the casual call-in or full-time. So if the name is green, it's full-time. If it is blue, it's the casual call-in, so it's the part-time member. And then our paid-on-call are the yellow. So we have nine paid-on-call currently, six for casual call-ins, and five full-time, which you'll see in just a little bit, that despite the fact that it's almost 50/50 as far as the paid-on-call to the more full-time casual call-in career staff, you might, you might call it, that's not necessarily how the response ends up looking. Because again, volunteers have a hard time being able to commit so much time outside of work and that kind of thing. It's a big ask for people and we know that. So part of one of our goals is to be able to staff two ambulances. The Joint Ambulance Committee has had that as a goal for a little while. Roughly 15% of our calls are covered by the backup truck, the second truck out. So having two trucks staffed helps tremendously. It helps for if there's a second 911 call. So say that we are on a call for a patient who was having a seizure and we get another call for somebody who's having chest pain, that's an emergency that we need to respond to. Having a second call or a second truck means we can respond to that immediately, not having to try to put together a crew all of a sudden, wait for the first crew to clear, or wait for another crew from a different service area to come in to pick up that call. Also helps tremendously if we have multiple people on the first scene, so in the case of car accidents typically, that's where you might have more than one person. Having two trucks available means that we can treat that many more people right away. And then also for transfers. Transfers from the local hospital, we can take to other hospitals in the region, so Madison and La Crosse are regular places that we would go. But we also take them to different facilities like Back to Pine Valley, Our House, places like that. Being able to provide those transfers helps the patients because they don't have to sit in the critical access hospital waiting to get to the cath lab in the UW. It helps the hospital because it clears up one of those beds that they're, they're having to have that patient wait in, but you've got another person coming in who needs that bed. It helps them tremendously there. It also helps the service quite a bit because that's, there's a lot of financial benefit from us being able to provide service for those transfers because Medicare pays by the mile and so, and most insurance companies do as well. So they actually make a pretty decent amount of money if we could provide service through transfers. And then it helps community overall. So like I had said with the previous slide with the staff, so despite the fact that we're kind of 50/50 on the more career side versus the paid-on-call, you'll see in 2022, and I had put this together in November for the December meeting and I did get a chance to update these graphs, but, so these are August through October, because that's the quarter we were in with the Joint Ambulance Committee quarter of the meeting. So you'll see for 2022, there were, 10% of the calls were made up with a legal crew that was just paid-on-call members. So what that means is for the legal crew, you have to have two licensed members with at least an EMT or above license. So that means both members who are responding on that call were paid-on-call in that circumstance. Whereas there were 62% of the calls in 2022 that were blended, so it was one person who was paid-on-call and one person who was either part-time or full-time. So if you compare 2022 to 2023, you see that there's a pretty significant drop in the paid-on-call percentage. So that is the change where we had a few of our paid-on-call members that retired and were grateful for their years of service and it was felt that when they left, we could, we could see the difference. Some of it also is that we had a few members who were paid-on-call that we hired on. So one of our common things is when we have positions that are open, we hire internally first for anyone who's interested. So we had a paid-on-call member who was interested in becoming full-time. And so you saw dramatic change in that because that person was covering a lot more call. And so there's a lot more of the full-time casual call-in that was being covered through that avenue. So this slide, and it's helpful if you've got it in front of you so you can see the numbers a little bit more. So we had, as part of our move, we actually found a few different display documents that we hadn't seen before. And one of them was a board that somebody put together of the total ambulance calls for 1986 to 1993. So if you look at that, you can see that the average, average number of calls in that span of time is probably about eight seventy-five, 875 calls a year on average at that point. If you look at the total number of ambulance calls from 2012 to 2023, and 2023 on here, again, this was put together in November. So we ended up finishing 2023 with 1,228 calls. So we were one call shy in tying 2021. But you can see in recent years, that number has increased for the, the call numbers. So our average is probably now about 1,150 for the average call number per year. So it's gone up tremendously since the 90s, the 80s, 90s. We recognize there are a number of reasons why that probably is the case. Some of it's because of the aging population. We've discussed, I'm sure you guys have discussed numerous times, the, the population in the community is, is aging and therefore, from an EMS standpoint, they need more medical care because now is when emergencies start, start to happen as people get older. So the aging population has helped for some of that increase. Some of the increase is the number of lift assists. So we've recognized that we have, we have a situation where it seems that more people are having difficult times having a support system that's actually readily available to them. So, you know, 20 years ago, we might have had where somebody would call a neighbor or call a son, daughter who were at work, they would be able to come and get them up if they had fallen. Now people don't tend to have those, those support systems or they don't want to bother them, is a common line that we hear too. And so we have an increased number of lift assists that it's, it's not somebody who's actually hurt, but they're needing assistance because they can't get themselves up. And if they don't get up, it does become a true emergency. So we don't have an issue responding to those by any means, but we believe it is partially because support systems are harder to come by for a lot of people. And then the transfers we take are also included. We average, I think our average is about 80 transfers maybe a year. Don't quote me on that. And then we're also assisting our neighbors. So we struggled a lot in 2013, 2014. We had a very difficult time getting crews together. But our neighbors are, and our neighbors, we relied on a lot during that time. They were able to come up and come over to be able to support us and take those calls that we didn't have crews to be able to respond with. Now our neighbors are starting to hit that spot where their communities are having a hard time getting people who are able to volunteer their time. So we're going and assisting them a little bit more as well. So looking specifically at Richland Center. So again, per the MOU, you guys have, have agreed to have us provide coverage to your community and the MOU has it laid out for each of the, our municipalities. It's a four-year call average and it's $170 per call for that year. So for Richland Center, you guys have a four-year average, so an average of 677 calls a year in your guys' community is what the current MOU has, which if you compare to the previous MOU, the four-year average was 575. It's 100 calls difference and that's why you see, you probably noticed when you guys go through your bills and stuff, when you had signed the MOU, that the annual total is so much more than what it was the previous years. That's because if you look at the call average for, for Richland Center by the year, you can see, so, so we take the four years. So for the MOUs of this year, we established them in '22. So we were looking at the four-year call average between 2018 and 2021. So your lowest year was 646 and your highest was 708. The MOU before that would have been established in, I think it was 2018. So your guys' call average was, the lowest was 494 and the highest was 596. So you can see how dramatically different those numbers are. So the city as a whole, Richland Center, has had a pretty dramatic increase in the call average. I haven't run the numbers yet for 2023, but I would anticipate that it would be on par with where the last two years have been. So you would, could expect that the next average might be a little bit higher, maybe not as dramatic as this last round. Hopefully not as dramatic as this last round. But you can see if we continue to do the, the rate per the MOU based on the call average, you guys have, have had that increase because of that. So does anybody have any questions on that specifically? I know that's one of the, the big points that I wanted to make sure that you guys understood why. We didn't increase our rates by any means. It was just the way that the numbers ran as far as the call. Okay. So again, looking at our budget overview, the, whatever is paid in by the municipalities goes into our segregated account, so at the end of the year, it does not automatically go back into the general fund like it previously had. We receive no county tax levy dollars and our budget is purely made out of the municipality payments, like the ones that you guys made monthly, the payments for services rendered. So we respond to a call, we build that patient's insurance, and then any grants, donations, or other miscellaneous funds. So last year, we ended the year with 256, about $257,000 in our account, and that's been since we started with a balance of zero in 2015. We're not trying to, you know, get more money from municipalities to grow that account and make it look like we're, we're making lots of money. That's actually to be able to have funds available. So if there's an issue where we need to suddenly make a purchase of an ambulance, we need to make repairs to the building, what have you, it's important to always have contingency funds available. So that's our operating, our operating account. Recent expenditures that we've had, we had moved $40,000 to the new ambulance outlet so that we'll be able to purchase another ambulance and maintain that. We had to purchase three new cardiac monitors and they were each, I'm really bad at numbers. They were each, I think it was $30,000?
Yeah, I think you're, it's 33 or something like that.
Yeah. It was just under $100,000 for the, the three monitors. And then one of our ambulances, Unit 35 as we refer to it, it's the red one, if you guys see him out on the road. That one had a mechanical issue and so we ended up having to actually purchase an entire new engine for it in September. And so we've been able to stay in the black this entire time because we have that segregated account and we've been frugal with our, our knowledge. So we're continually trying to keep taxpayers in mind. There was a grant that was available two years ago now that could be written for a number of different things. Some services in the area wrote it for a new ambulance. Some services wrote it for new equipment because again, the cardiac monitors are incredibly expensive. We wrote it for staffing. We recognized that staffing was the number one thing that we needed because it doesn't matter if we have five brand-new shiny ambulances, if you don't have two licensed members, you can't, you can't have that ambulance roll to any calls. So we recognized the need for staffing was the highest priority, so we wrote the grant for that and received $22,000 for it. We also received regular funds through the finance program through the state. One of the other things that we are regularly trying to do, so from the standpoint of other services purchasing new ambulances with that grant, Muscatade is selling one of their ambulances because they were able to purchase a new ambulance. We're in the process of hopefully being able to purchase their used ambulance so that we can reach Axie it. We don't need to do that right away, but one of the cost-saving measures we've recognized we can do is be able to have an ambulance that is the, if you look at an ambulance, it's essentially two main parts. So there's the, the driving compartment and aspects of it, so the, you know, the steering wheel, the engine, the tires, that kind of stuff, that system, but then you've got the patient compartment, the box. So we can take that box and put it on a new chassis, so we can essentially take that box and put it on a new van, if that makes sense. And that's going to save a lot of money. I had talked with one of the other services and it was, I think it was pretty close to $300,000 for a new ambulance for them, whereas this new chassis is about $60,000 and then the cost to be able to move the box onto that. It'd be a huge cost saving. So trying to keep the taxpayers in mind as we do those kinds of things. We're also attempting to use the backup crew whenever we've got one available to help with lift assists and things like that. So one of the other trends that we've noticed in the community is that the average weight for patients is not as light as it once was. And so with the average weight being higher, having two licensed people on a call isn't always as many as you need to be able to lift people when they're having a hard time. So if we have a backup crew, we're able to have that backup crew go and assist in that circumstance. Otherwise, we may have to page for the fire department and the fire department charges us $200 anytime that they come to assist. And so it's just one of those cost-saving avenues. If we need the duty crew from the fire department, we absolutely will call them. We don't have any issues with that. But just recognizing that if it's just needing one or two other people, we can pull in those one or two other people from our service. And then the emergency services building. So I'm sure you guys are aware, we've got the new emergency services building that was the old REC building by the pool. So, so this building is for the ambulance and emergency management. And through the process of this, working through this project, we've done everything we could to try to keep the cost savings in our favor. So whenever possible, we purchased items from Wisconsin Surplus. So if you ever come into our building, the, the tables that people sit in for the meetings and things are purchased from Wisconsin Surplus. We use those same desktops to make desks in the offices where we needed to. We also, whenever possible, handle projects in-house with our own staff. We have a surprising number of staff who are handymen and so they are able to do some of those projects like installing a fire door and putting some of the ceiling stuff up so that it met fire code, things like that. So whenever possible, we didn't have to pay somebody else to come in, if we could do it in-house, we certainly did our best to do that. And then we had many items, including kitchen counters, which were a major cost donated, which was a huge, huge help. And then we also had the major donations from REC and Bob Simpson that first off started the project to be able to get us to that point. So again, doing everything we can to be physically responsible with what we've got. One of the other things that can't be overlooked is COVID, everybody's favorite topic, but it's important to highlight some of the non-obvious involvement that EMS had in response to that. So one of the things that we worked on was procurement and distribution of PPE. So we helped get PPE to the schools, to dentists, to group homes, all sorts of places. We helped with the free community testing and we also helped with vaccine administration. So the Joint Ambulance Committee?
You can go ahead.
Okay. So some of the goals that the Joint Ambulance Committee have established, they've, they've got a list of them, so if you're interested in that, we can absolutely get a copy of them to you. Just let Sharon know and, or we can email them over, no big deal. But some of the primary focus areas are staffing, making sure that the municipalities' voices are heard, because we recognize we've been doing this for a few years now and we haven't necessarily heard too much for feedback. And sometimes no news is good news, but sometimes it's that people just haven't felt like they had the opportunity to say something. And so we want to make sure that everybody's given that opportunity to be heard. Another goal that we currently have is to replace the 2003 ambulance, which is something that we are working actively through. Planning for financial needs in the future is a big highlight. And then strengthening partnerships with the hospital and the fire department. And then working toward providing paramedic-level service and community medicine program. Those are things that we are hoping to maybe step our way into. So hopefully good things to come. So again, our sincerest thanks to the Richland Electric Cooperative Board, Shannon Clark, and Bob Simpson for the donations that they provided to us so that we were able to do the emergency services building project at all. That has been a huge asset for the service. We've been able to recruit more people. The local law enforcement partners have told us that they now find themselves racing us to get to scenes where it used to be where they would get on scene and they would know that they've got a few minutes before EMS will get there. Now there have been times where we get there the same time as them or even beat them. So not that Billy has new goals, but you know, we're, we're much quicker and that makes a huge difference for patients. Because if you're in that spot where you, even if it isn't a major emergency, you don't feel well or someone you love doesn't feel well, it can, it can feel like any minute is an hour. And so being able to get there that much quicker is a huge, huge help. And in those true emergency situations, time is tissue and every second does count. So because of this building, we've been a lot quicker in our response because we've got people who are actually willing to be at the station. When we were at the courthouse, I don't know if you guys had seen where we were at, but it wasn't a very inviting environment. And we've got bedrooms now and facilities, so people actually can feel welcome to be there and therefore we respond so much quicker. So a huge thank, thanks to them and to the community for helping us to get where we are today. So now it's the part where, if you guys have any thoughts, how are you, feel like, how do you feel like we're doing? Is there anything that you would like us to get to you as far as any information? Our goal is to be as transparent as possible on, on things. So if you have any questions or information you're looking for, please let us know.
Questions or comments for Amber? So the comment, about two months ago, a family member had a heart attack here in town. And every step of the way was outstanding, from the ambulance service to the stent placement in St. Mary's in Madison. So every step of the chain, EMS, the ER staff, the med flight staff, and the people in Madison, and it all started with your people. And that was wonderful. It was really phenomenal. There's no other ways. Yeah, you guys saved your life.
We like to do that.
There's no other way to say it. So thank you.
We're part of the chain, for sure, and we're happy to help wherever we can, but if, if the other parts of that chain aren't in place, which unfortunately is, is a struggle that people are running into. that people are running into where the bed isn't available in the larger hospital piece. But being able to help in those situations, we're happy to do it, so thank you for that.
Thank you too. Anything else for Amber tonight? How about a thank you for Amber tonight? Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. And next on tonight's agenda, we have an information presentation from Richland Center Transit.
Okay, so I brought some-
Hold on one second, can you get her the mic, Mr. Glassburn?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking to see, is there, did you send anything in?
Nope.
Okay, okay.
No, no, in case. So I just have a little bit of information on twenty-twenty-two versus twenty-twenty-three as far as ridership and revenue and giving updates on staffing and stuff. And then if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me as well. So just start with trips. In twenty-twenty-two, the total trips were twenty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-three. And in twenty-twenty-three, and this does not have December included yet, is twenty-three thousand ninety-six. So you're very close to that twenty-twenty-two number and monthly trips average anywhere from one thousand to two thousand or eighteen-hundred, two thousand, so you'll be above trips for the end of twenty-twenty-three compared to twenty-twenty-two. So that's a good thing. I think I did a quick, there's nothing final on here, but it looks like our December was two thousand two hundred and twenty-nine trips. So we'll be above that. The driver hours. So how the city is billed for services is driver hours only. So there's actually the hours that the drivers are on the road. So even if your budgeted hours in our contract are higher, you only get billed for what we provide. So the hours for twenty-twenty-two were seven thousand four hundred and sixty-one that we provided and through November of this year, it's six thousand six hundred and thirty-four. So there are, we're, are going to be less hours provided in twenty-twenty-three than twenty-twenty-two. And part of that, big part of that is, is staffing. So we have had trouble finding staff, even having applicants to apply. So in a lot of our cities, we went through this through COVID, like Amber was saying that we are still revisiting that, but we definitely across the state lost employment during COVID. Trip numbers went down during COVID, people were staying home. We are seeing this increase just through our in Richland Center of increases in numbers now since COVID for both ridership and some applications. And it's kind of varied throughout the state, so we are in thirty-two different cities in Wisconsin. We operate a shared ride transit and we'll see influxes in little areas of applicants. And Richland Center's been one that has been knocked, so that's probably good for your other businesses, but they, there's not a ton of employees out there looking, but it has been a hardship for a lot of the drivers. They're doing a great job, they're working extra, they're putting in time. You can see that even with less hours, we are giving more rides than we did in twenty-twenty-two. Financially for you guys, your revenue is going to be higher and your expenditures are going to be lower because your revenues, the amount of rides are up. So your revenue is up and what you're paying us is down because our driver hours are a little bit lower.
How many, how many drivers do you need, like in addition to what you have right now?
So we just hired last week somebody part-time. So now we're, we've been about sixty hours short a week of our budgeted hours. This person I think is going to work twenty, so really a full-time position short, whether that's a full-time position or two part-time people.
Someone's interested, who do they contact?
They can go to our website, runninginc.net and you can apply online or you can call even the Richland Center Transit number and talk with somebody about us getting an application. So you can print an application on our website or fill it out right on our website or call. So we're always looking, we, we, we tell everybody even if they want to work one day a week or two days a week or they have a, you know, fifteen-hour is all they can work. We work around schedules like that all the time. So we'd be happy to get more employees. So the budget, budget hours are ten thousand two hundred and thirteen for the year is what our, what our goal is for the service. And then through twelve-nine, we were sitting at six thousand eight hundred and four. Less than that in hours for sure. And then as far as fare revenue, in twenty-twenty-two, total fare revenue was a hundred and two nine hundred and forty-four. And through November, we're at one oh one seven sixteen. So through November, we are pretty darn close to twenty-twenty-two and then you're going to add in December's revenue. So that will, more than likely that will be bumped up quite a bit. Agency revenue, so in your fare structure, you have senior rates, adult rates, disabled students. There's also a rate called an agency rate. So this rate is a rate that is paid by any managed care organization. Include some, IRS, Lake Lynn, those are, are common managed care organizations in the area. No rider is paying this agency fare out of pocket, is paid for by Medicaid funds, which are also federal funds. So that is why agency rates are meant to be more of the actual cost of the ride rather than the reduced fare that is charged, that is then subsidized by local and state and federal funding. So that is a big piece of it. In twenty-twenty-two, the agency fares were sixty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-five and then again through November, we were at sixty-four thousand six hundred. So you've seen a bit of an increase of that in twenty-twenty-three as well. We never really know, it, it all depends on your community and the needs and, and who's a part of managed care organization and the type of services those individuals need. So that can fluctuate year to year. So that's a little bit about that. Again, your revenue is in line and going to be higher for twenty-three than twenty-two, more rides in twenty-three than twenty-two, both very typical that we've been seeing in public transit across the state.
Okay, questions or comments?
I'll make a comment. Our office works very closely with Running and they do a tremendous job providing all the necessary data that we need to then report to the state. So I know it's a, there's a number of things that we have to do on our end, but it would be a lot harder if we didn't have them running numbers and, and doing things that they do on their end. So just wanted to say that we appreciate that from you guys.
Yes, yes, and shared ride has, and I don't think a lot of people understand that there are a lot of requirements to run a shared ride program and a lot of demand from WISTAC on reporting and record-keeping and tracking with that. And so we're happy to help provide all that. We actually, our dispatch program, we developed ourselves so that it lines up with what the audit team comes in and audits on. They actually now audit us remotely from, from Madison and don't have to come to our office, so that's been great too. We have a good, good relationship with the audit team as well, so. And my husband is, couldn't be here tonight, he is in, well, probably Rapids right now. We started three new systems between yesterday and today, so he's been busy. Probably have to add to that number of thirty-two to thirty-five.
Further questions or comments? Thank you very much for coming down tonight. Safe trip.
Great, thank you.
All right. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes, which probably should have been done already. Just take a minute to review the minutes and not entertain a motion to approve. I'll make a motion, approve, motion for Mr. Chambers, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Ms. Hapunjan, any discussion of the minutes? Hearing that all in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. And next on the agenda, we did, we did the approval of the agenda. City and Utility Department had reports and concerns, we'll start with Mr. Jason Glassburn.
Okay, so this is the second rung on a report and if there's anything that the council or anybody else would like to see differently, just let me know. But what we've tried to do is, is just create a really quick overview that can be consistently presented for Richland Center Economic Development. The primary areas of focus that have been identified are housing, workforce retention and attraction and quality of life amenities. Primary projects for the period twelve-six to one-five are Highway fourteen east, infrastructure planning, annexation work, TIP district work and city boundary research. I have bullet points under each of these, but I think I'm going to state more of a high-level summary and if there are any questions, I'm glad to answer those. MSA traffic study of Highway fourteen east, that's a study that we commissioned several months ago and you heard a presentation on that briefly at the last council meeting, but we go for a full presentation at Planning Commission set for January tenth. And so there's been staff review and some conversations that my office has with MSA to just make sure that what they're providing is good and we can create a long-term plan based on that. Panorama Estates Buildings Two and Three, we continue to work on. We are in a financial or in a negotiation process using LRS, a financial service, with the developers, so we continue to work on that and are hopeful that something may be able to be presented to you for decision, perhaps in the next council meeting. Lamont Subdivision is property that's above Allison Park and the owners of that property have been continuing consulting with me, my office zoning, to try to figure out long-term planning for, you know, implementation of streets and utilities. And so we continue to have conversations about that. We had a recent meeting with them where they, they were sharing house plans with me. So got a couple of people doing some work on that and so that's very exciting for Richland Center. Story field, we continue to have some conversations with interested developers. At this point, there's one that I hope to have a follow-up conversation with at the, towards the end of January, who has story field in an architectural firm of theirs looking at plans that we had done conceptually. So we hope to have more information on that. There's a couple of retail projects that I can, my office continues to foster conversations between the retailers and private parties here in, in the Richland Center area. Jefferson School, we continue to work towards, with the zoning department and the potential new owner of that property for redevelopment. At one point, we probably shared with you that, that, that could be planned unit development, rezoning. At this point, it looks like it's probably, will stay in an R-five or move to an R-five. And of course, a lot of that rezoning effort is being deducted by our zoning department. Wait finding an entrance sign project, we, I completed the review of the bids today for Planning Commission, which will, the, the bids will be at Planning Commission on the tenth and then they will make their way back to here through the Finance Committee, hopefully at our next meeting on February sixth. I also am still involved in a, a grant oversight program with the county. At the point that my employment changed from county, city to just city, it was agreed that I would continue to monitor, so there's a year-end report that I completed on behalf of the Rockbridge School who received a community development investment grant. And we've just recently received our report from the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency. They have provided two grants with services into Richland Center at this point, the second. The first one was on technical studies on Orange Street and primarily concerned with brownfield type of issues. And this report that was just completed is looking at conceptual site design for areas on Highway fourteen, primarily focused on, on the Ferguson property. Final report was issued on twelve-four and the Planning Commission will be reviewing that on January tenth. And we'll see if there's action that comes out of Planning Commission with that. So that's a, a brief summary on some of the things that, that I'm, have been involved in the past month.
Questions or comments, Mr. Glassburner?
What is R-five?
R-five means residential of five units or above. And our ordinance has a code for that, a zoning code for that, that specifies both permitted uses and conditional uses in what we call an R-five zoning district. So we would be looking at moving, I believe it's sitting right now in an R-two or three, R-three I think it is, and so we would move it to an R-five.
And that's residential only?
No, it is not. Each residential category does have some other types of uses that are mixed in with, with that residential classification. So R-five, because it is more of a commercial, a commercial zoning, because of the, the volume of people or the density of people, it also allows for more commercial types of use of the property.
Good Connie? Okay, other questions or comments for Jason? Thank you, sir. The other department head we have tonight is Police Chief Billy Jones, do you want the mic or do you promise to speak loudly?
I don't have it tonight.
Nothing tonight?
Thank you.
Questions or comments for Mr. Jones? Okay, thank you both. Next on the agenda then, Mayor and Older Persons Committee Commission Board Reports and Comments and/or Items to be Discussed at a Future Meeting, anything tonight Connie Hapunjan? Karen Sethi?
Yes, I have a few things from the library board. We are going to be contracting with TC Networks for cameras for the library, the, inside the building as well as the exterior. So that'll be in the works. We are still in the process of hiring a program coordinator. We are moving through a process with applicants and the position does remain open. RFID tagging, which allows for patrons to check out their own materials. So each book has to be tagged with a certain little key for the computer to read it. And there was an in-service date and they made quite a bit of progress on there, but they, they're looking at probably late spring for that to be finalized. And we have a couple of items, MOU and an ordinance coming up on the agenda, I believe, that we worked, that was worked through, so we'll hear more about that in a bit. And tourism did not meet, so that's all I have.
Karen Tom McCarthy?
Nothing tonight.
Mark Chambers?
Nothing tonight.
Melanie Walters?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Kevin Mooney? Steve Downs?
Nothing today.
And Ryan Cairns?
Nothing in the morning tonight, Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, right before the meeting, Mr. Aaron Joyce gave me a wonderful letter the city received that I'm going to read to the public. It's, it's dated December twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. It reads, Dear Mayor Copeland and the City of Richland Center, subject of donation to Woodman Senior Center in memory of Jeanette E. Brewer. We are writing to express our sincere gratitude for the exceptional services and experiences provided by the Woodman Senior Center and its dedicated staff. Our mother Jeanette E. Brewer was an integral part of the committee that contributed to the design selection of the center, a role she held with great pride and enthusiasm. Following the completion of the center's construction, our mother became a devoted host on Wednesday afternoons. She cherished the time spent with fellow older adults, engaging in various activities such as celebrating birthdays, sharing stories and enjoying games like Pinnacle. The Woodman Senior Center became a focal point in her life. She- She enjoyed opportunities to travel with groups organized by the center, and even pre-COVID, very much appreciated the convenience of having her taxes done there too. As a widow and a naturally social person, Jeanette used the center to prevent boredom and to keep her mind sharp. The center played a crucial role in providing her with a sense of community and purpose. Unfortunately, in October, at the age of eighty-nine, we lost our beloved mother. In honor of Jeanette Brewer's memory, we would like to make a donation of seven hundred twenty-five dollars to the Woodman Senior Center. We trust that this contribution will be used to either enhance the array of programs and opportunities available to older adults, or to assist in the acquisition of some much-needed equipment that will benefit all who utilize the center. We extend our deepest appreciation to you, the staff, and all involved in making the Woodman Senior Center a warm and enriching environment for older adults. The memories and positive experiences our mother had there will forever hold a special place in our hearts. We look forward to the continued success of the Woodman Senior Center with deepest gratitude, the family of Jeanette E. Brewer, Bruce Brewer, Sparta, Wisconsin, Denise Brewer, Richland Center, Wisconsin, Vincent Brewer, Sun Prairie, Wisconsin, and Michelle Brewer, I'm sorry, Michelle, I don't know if it's pates or pites, of Lester Prairie, Minnesota. Thank you very much to the family of Jeanette Brewer for the generous donation. Okay, next on our agenda tonight, we have the treasurer's report.
Okay, excuse me. So this is for the period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. City general had an ending balance of three hundred sixty-three thousand, seven seventy-six. State school number one had an ending balance of five million, fifty-seven thousand, eight sixty-two. Um, also, the business R love savings account had an ending balance of five hundred eighty-six thousand, one forty-two. Uh, looking at the library checking account, uh, had an ending balance of one hundred ninety-seven thousand, five sixty-one. K nine fund, ending balance, forty-one thousand, eight ninety-four. The room tax account had an ending balance of thirty-six thousand, uh, five twenty-seven. Greater Richland Tourism, uh, had an ending balance of fifty-four thousand, seven sixty-three. Uh, the renew RC loan program, uh, that's in state school number five, is the affordable housing, uh, fund that we have, uh, had an ending balance of one million, thirty-two thousand, eight twenty-four. And state school number four, our projects account, uh, that had an ending balance of one million, six hundred sixty-five thousand, three ninety-three. Um, I'll also point out that our, uh, property tax account, uh, where all the current property taxes are going into, uh, we have receded already this year, uh, just over two-point-two million dollars. Uh, so that fund had an ending balance of two million, two hundred forty-eight thousand, six twenty-six. There any questions?
Questions or comments for Mr. Joyce? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve tonight's treasurer's report.
Motion to approve the report.
Motion for Ms. Tepley, is there a second? Second for Mr. McCarthy, discussion of the treasurer's report. Hearing none, we'll need a roll call vote, Mr. Joyce.
Older person, Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hapunjan?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda, payment of bills. While the council reviews those bills, it is my duty to read the following. The bills presented on this day excluding any library fund invoices, having been referred to the Finance and Budget Committee, and said committee having duly investigated and audited these bills, hereby make the following recommendation. If the city bills presented on this day be paid with the following adjustments and/or exceptions, none are listed, it is signed by all three members of the Finance Committee. Once the council has sent a momentary view, entertain a motion to pay the bill.
I'll make a motion to pay bills.
Motion for Ms. Walters, is there a second?
Second.
Second, uh, Mr. Melby, any discussion of the bills?
Quick question for the first item, equipment breakdown invoice. Aaron, do you have a, any idea, insight on that one?
Uh, what's the vendor on that one?
Aegis? Aegis Corporation, sir. Very first.
Uh, sure, that is, uh, insurance, it's part of our, um, property viability insurance.
Thank you, sir, that's what I was, just need a little clarification, appreciate it.
Further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll need a roll call vote.
Older person, McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hapunjan?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda, item nine, consider ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh one, annexing parcels zero twenty-two dash two six three four dash one thousand, zero twenty-two dash two six three four dash one one zero zero, zero twenty-two dash two six four three dash two thousand. Okay, this property is the, the property the Richland Center Hospital has purchased on the east end of town. I, I conferred during tonight's meeting with city attorney Wendell. My only question that I had is at the last Plan Commission meeting, we had the ETZ board there, the extraterritorial board there. Uh, on that agenda, we had a parcel split out there, which we did discuss. Uh, the annexation, as I recall, was not discussed because there was not a representative from the hospital present. So I just wanted to make sure that the council was clear to proceed if they choose to do so. In light of that, and Mr. Wendell assures me that it is the council's prerogative, if you'd like, if you'd like to do so. If you take a minute, we'll review that petition. Again, this is, um, the hospital's property, known commonly locally as the co-tractor land. Um, Mr. Glassburner, do you have anything to add with regards to this? I know you've worked with the hospital closely on the project.
Yeah, I think that the, the packet is well organized that you have, um, starting out with the Richland Hospital project, project outline for land division and annexation. So there's a very thorough report that the zoning administrator, Mark Stewart, has put together, um, outlining all of the processes that we needed to follow and all the processes that he did follow. Um, towards the back of that document, um, he's clearly suggesting that the annexation move forward. Um, that's on the last page. It says, utilize City of Richland Center petition for annexation document to file for annexation. The annexation process was outlined and followed. This included the notification of the town of Richland and Richland School District of the pending annexation. Attachment to this process and timeline included. And in your package, you do have a, a, a copy of the certified survey map, as well as the ordinance, which I understand was collaboratively, uh, drafted between Michael Wendell, our attorney, and the zoning office. And, uh, so it, it, it should all be in order here. And, uh, Mark did say, if, in, in case of emergency, he could perhaps take a phone call, but he is not at work today, so. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer. I know Michael has quite a bit of information on this as well. And again, if there's a need for an emergency call, I can try to make that.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, if the hospital isn't going to do this, why would we do it right now then?
This is when they want to do it. It's just annexing the land, it doesn't affect anything else. It just makes the parcel part of the city. That's all it, that's all this means.
And, uh, the annexation process is very much landowner-driven. Um, so, because they want to, it is, uh, maybe a little bit of a simplistic, but a, an effective, uh, understanding of the reasoning for it.
Okay, so on this ordinance, and I'll hold in a minute if there's more questions or comments, but to remind the older persons, in a moment, when entertaining a motion to approve, if you do so, we either need to read this, or we need to remember that part of the motion needs to be to suspend the rules and waive the reading. Okay, questions or comments, anything further?
Uh, under, I believe this is the current timeline, and all of the, all of the elements, uh, you said were followed. Particular reason why the, and I'm guessing it's for tax purposes and whatnot. Um, so, uh, this is the last page, application documents. That, uh, third sentence, this includes a notification of the town of Richland and the Richland School District of the pending annexation. Is that for, is that notification, what is the purpose of that notification to those two entities, please?
Uh, since that is the municipality in which the property is currently located, and the school district is another taxing entity within that property, then the statute requires notification of them.
That's what I thought the case was, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Okay, entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh one, annexing territory to the City of Richland Center, Wisconsin, parcels zero two two dash two six three four dash one thousand, zero two two dash two six three four dash one one hundred, and zero two two dash two six four three dash two thousand. So moved. Motion by Mr. Downs, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Melby, is there further discussion? Mr. Downs, is your motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the ordinance?
Yes.
Your second, Mr. Melby?
Absolutely.
Correct? Okay, questions or comments?
I do have a quick question. Okay, so on the annexation sketch, it looks like it leaves out Lot one from the CSM, from the certified survey map? Am I looking at that correctly?
Correct.
They don't own Lot one, or someone else owns Lot one?
They own, they own Lot one, but at this time it's chosen not to leave it out for, um, again, their own decision-making process. They believe that it may, um, may have some advantage to leaving it out with regard to future development. Again, is that the owner's prerogative?
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Joyce, we'll need a roll call vote.
Older person, Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Cairns?
Aye.
Hapunjan?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item ten, consider approval of a city donation policy. This has been in the works for a little while. Mr. Wendell, did you draft this?
Uh, so, the policy that's included in the packet online, I was just reviewing it, and it is not the most recent version. Um, so I emailed, hopefully, everybody. I was doing it quickly and trying to pay attention to two things, so I apologize if I missed anyone. Um, but you should have in your emails the current revision, um, which incorporates the tiered value system that I was directed to include. Um, in addition, I wanted to try something a little bit new here. Um, and so I've also attached, uh, what I've titled, a policy discussion guide. Um, just some of my thoughts on, um, what the purpose of the policy is supposed to be, how it came to come together, um, some points that I think the council should weigh in on, and, um, a, a couple of questions from me just before the policy is finalized.
So while they're reading this, since they're just getting the correct one, um, what led to this? I, I know it, but go, let's get the background here.
Uh, so, how did I phrase it here? Um, there were questions from a group of concerned citizens, um, regarding a donation that they had wanted to make. Um, and it was unclear to me what the city's responsibilities were, um, what it could accept, who can accept. Uh, and I did find, um, unlike some other municipalities I work with, we actually do have a current donation policy, um, which was nice, but it's pretty short on detail and process. And so, um, I think it was Jefferson County or something. I just kind of stole theirs as the base and then refined it, uh, brought it before council, and then further revised it based on some of the feedback that I got there. Um, but basically, we just want to make sure that the process is clear for the city accepting any kind of donations, um, who can accept what value of donation, and then, um, how those donations are recognized and reported.
Okay, I know this is a lot to read, but, um, I'll just leave it before open for the moment for questions or comments. Mr. Wendell, what are the significant changes from what, uh, policy we have right now to what's being proposed here?
Well, the current policy fit on the tail end of the policy discussion document, so it's less than a quarter of a page. This new policy is about two pages. Um, the current donation policy basically just says we should get a bunch of information from a donator, um, which I certainly encourage. Um, but it doesn't describe, you know, who can accept donations. If, if somebody walks up and, you know, has a, a, a snowplow driver or something and says, hey, I want to give you my house, um, you know, there, there are consequences to that, that, uh, somebody who's trying to remove the snow may not be able to fully consider at the time. Um, and so it just protects, uh, personnel. Um, I think the biggest benefit to it is that it would make clear to any potential donator, um, I'll point specifically to, uh, section eight of the proposed policy, the ownership and use. Um, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we addressed is the fact that should you make a donation to the city, that donation becomes the property of the city. Um, and so actually, using the example that we have immediately in front of us, um, certainly, I, I, I imagine we, the, the city intends on respecting the, the family's, uh, directive regarding that donation. However, if this policy were adopted, that seven hundred and fifty-dollar donation would be the city's, and, uh, the city could do with it as it chose. I think that, that's more, um, applicable to materials than money. Um, so we came up with examples of, uh, like, I have a, a lawnmower that, you know, the dead man's switch doesn't work anymore, and it's kind of old. Um, do I want to give that to the city? And if I do, am I going to be upset if it strips it for parts? Versus, um, other use, or, or what I imagine the use that it would be?
Are you saying that they would be specific about what they're donating the money for? That the city can do whatever they want, not what the person is donating?
Yes. I imagine that, uh, a consistent pattern of ignoring the wishes of donators will eventually lead to a cessation of donations. And so I recommend, if practical, to adhere to the request of the donator. Um, but there are certain times when we are just not going to be able to use the donation in the way that the donator wants us to, and we need to be clear about the fact that that is our decision solely.
Does the city have a problem with this?
At least once.
Would it be, would it be good practice that at each, that we are very clear and transparent with all donations, any and all donations, that we do make this, particularly point eight, clear to the donor, that we will try to respect all the wishes that the donor has, has provided in? For example, the, the thing that the, uh, the mayor, uh, read for that monetary donation, but at the end of the day, that it is the city's decision?
Uh, what could happen is we could simply draft like a form letter to be handed to anyone, you know, in exchange for the donation. Um, that just kind of laying this out, maybe even attaching the full policy, but just pointing out, you know, the, the highlights. Um, that's certainly feasible, and I, I, I think the more that that is made clear, uh, the less problems we have down the line, or, you know, the, the complaints are going to be a little less reasonable because we, we have tried to make it clear.
Sure, sure, thank you.
Um, question? Uh, under the, um, draft donation policy, policy for discussion guide, you have, uh, here stated, what doesn't the policy do? You have create a reporting requirement from the administrator to the council, unless triggered by the donation's value. And you should have something in there so the council is more aware when these donations come in, whether it's...
So, and this is the second time it's come up tonight, so let me just make clear. My role is in limited scenarios to explain to you what you should or should not do. The reason I put that in the guide is because it is something that I tagged as worth conversation, but the existing policy did not have that reporting requirement to the council. So whether you should include that is left to the council's discretion. Whether or not you could include that, absolutely, but it does not currently have, so if you look at Section Ten, Donation List Listing, department heads annually have to report their donations that they receive to the administrator. That could, I think, either then the administrator could have to report it to the council, that could certainly be a process. I don't know that having all the department heads come before the council and reporting the donations that they received is maybe the best use of their time, but, you know, that's also something that the council could include as part of this policy.
I'm having a hard time understanding why it's going to come up that if I donate money for a bench in the park, it's going to be used for whatever they want it to be used for. I would not, I wouldn't be happy if I were somebody donating.
All right, so, let's say somebody donates to us a full panoply of Nazi flags and paraphernalia, and they say, I'm giving this to you so you can proudly fly the Nazi flag in front of the city hall, and that's, that's why I want to do this. Well, those can be shredded and used for bandages, or made, some other use could be made of those, and it just needs to be clear to that donor, like, hey, the city does not condone the actions of the Nazi Party of Germany, and so we won't be displaying these in accordance with their wishes. That is pursuant to our policy.
And to your point, not that it's impossible, but I think it would be highly unlikely of the specific example you gave, that the city would reject the donation specifically for a park bench. It's a fair question, but to his point, it's really there for kind of the outliers, those things that would raise eyebrows. I'm going to pause for a moment, Mr. Chambers needed a short break, and I think he should be here when we vote on this, so let's just take five minutes. All right, resume discussion of the city donation policy. More questions or comments?
A comment that may turn into a motion, given that we have just received the email with, you know, other things that we might want considering to this policy, the idea that we might want to table or postpone.
Motion to table this till next month's city council meeting, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Is that, Ms. Tepley just made a motion and Ms. Hop and John seconded it, and I believe that that motion was to table this topic until the next city council meeting, correct?
Correct.
All right, further discussion? Okay, hearing none, Aaron, let's do a roll call.
All the person, Walters?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Karens?
Aye.
Hop and John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda, Consider Securing Audit Services with Johnson Black and Company for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Got a copy of the letter, we, I don't even know how many years, the city has used Johnson Black for its audits for many, many years. Do we know when we'll have Bill Whalley down here to run over, to go over to twenty-two? Okay.
No.
Okay, we need, he knows that...
He's just here for the county, so.
Okay, because that means usually he's here December or June, we'll get him here. Mr. Joyce, as far as I know, we've not had any issues with this firm at all.
None.
Yep, okay. And it doesn't, their fees are just, you know, bill hours, so it just depends on how long things take, which it's been for years as well. This looks like their standard agreement that we've used for quite a while with them. If there are questions or comments, I'll list those right now, and we'll go from there. Okay, if there's no discussion, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Was that cutting?
I would like to make a motion.
Is your motion to, what do you want to say this? To obtain continued financial services? Let's see, how do I want to phrase this? To...
To engage with Johnson Black for audit services on behalf of the city.
That was your motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Downs, did you get it, Mr. Joyce?
Getting it.
Yeah, I'll wait for it.
Aye.
Okay, you have the motion and the second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call, Mr. Joyce.
All the person, Melby?
Aye.
Downs?
Aye.
Karens?
Aye.
Hop and John?
Aye.
Tepley?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Chambers?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Finance Committee was removed. Appointments to committees, commissions, boards, and confirm appointments, I have one tonight, appointing Mr. Terry Testillon to the Housing Authority. Any questions or comments, please ask me now. If you don't know Terry, he was, he oversaw neighborhood housing services here for many years.
Will he be replacing him?
Uh, yeah, Mary Colloy has resigned, and he will fill her place.
Were there more than one applicant for that, or was he the sole?
No, he's it, and he's perfect. I mean, he's got oceans of housing experience and a good rapport with several of the committee member. Okay, hearing no discussion, entertain a motion to approve Terry Testillon as a new appointee to the Housing Authority.
So?
Motion from Mr. Melby, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Downs, any discussion? All in favor of approving Terry Testillon to the Housing Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Next, public comment, no council action will be taken on any matter originating under this item. Public, did you have a comment?
I do, I have a question. If I weren't able to come to the meeting, any meeting, and I would read the agenda, how would I know Consider would include approval?
Okay, so what is...
That you would ask for a motion and it would be carried. How would I know that without being here?
Well, let's just phrase that because the, actually because the council could or could not make them, or they don't have to, so, yeah.
The agenda clearly states items for discussion and action.
And the reason it says Consider is because, I believe, because they're not obligated to make a motion, but they can. So it's just sort of standard language to leave that, to indicate that?
Now, I'm more confused.
You what?
More confused.
Okay, go ahead, explain, and I'll try to, which item are you reading?
Well, I'm just wondering, when you say Consider, how would I know that it is going in for a motion, or if you're just going to do the discussion?
So for instance, items for discussion...
Consider approval of the city donation policy.
Okay.
How did I, how would I know that that was going to go for a vote?
Okay, so as Mr. City Attorney Wendell pointed out, right above Item Eight, so hence also above Nine, which was the city donation policy, it's the bold front, items for discussion and action, so everything under that heading, there we go.
Got it.
Good question. And Mr. Perry, do you have anything to add?
Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All right, that ends public comment. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourned tonight's meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, tonight's meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.